I called the meeting of the Deere Field Landways Committee to order at six o'clock. This meeting is being recorded. I think, yes, we are. First order of business is to review and approve the minutes of November fourteenth, twenty twenty-fourth.
We took eight minutes. That was November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second?
There's another discussion, all bigger.
Next up, financial statement, shall we?
Okay.
I emailed you out the expense reports, which included the period through December thirty-first. I think the only item on there that we probably haven't talked about yet that's a negative budget account is special ed transportation. We are seeing increased costs in our routes. Those are contracted services based on needs of the students in the building. We don't have any control over them and they often do fluctuate. With that said, we have adequate funds and savings and other lines to cover that expenditure. The other account overages, we have already talked about throughout the year to date. If you have questions, I'm happy to look into things or answer them again. And for the record, thirty-five warrants were signed totaling two-hundred-ninety-two thousand nine-hundred-and-thirteen dollars and ninety-six cents. We're in good shape at this time of the year. There's, I think, four-hundred thousand left remaining in the budget for the last six months that's not yet spent. So it'll get eaten out quickly.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for Shelley?
All right. So I just have a few updates. Some of this you may see on Parent Square. Mary, are you on Parent Square now?
I added you. All right. Keep trying. So our DEI and DLT, they're student-led committees, and one is a teacher-led committee. We introduced our community theme of, our theme of community this year, this month. Oh, let me just start again. It's Community Month. We're reading each kindness as our community, as our whole building-wide book reading. And our art project that's going along with that is Gold Setting for the Rose. That's happening tomorrow, actually. Our student ambassadors at our last all-school meeting on our recommendation that came out of the Behavior and Culture Committee shared our hallway and cafeteria expectation signs. So now those are all around our building. Do you want to do the Yankee Candle donation from now or move ahead?
What's that? It's time for new business yet?
She was going to talk about it.
Oh, go ahead and talk about it.
She's asking if she should talk about it.
Yeah, go ahead and talk about it. They can whatever it is.
All right. So and then Yankee Candle, as they always do, have given us another generous donation of four thousand dollars. And this year, I have not yet decided where it's going to go. That came just right before we got back from break. It's like, we're so far on the playground. And then there's voices from the classroom that just give you a little snapshot of what each grade level is doing. So Free K is working on hibernation, talking about nocturnal and dinoural. I can't give them that. Now he's going to try anymore. And there, there's pictures in there of them making bear caves. Kindergarten are building their literacy and science skills and their weather unit. And they're answering questions like, what is the weather? Are we prepared for the weather? Which is really great because we're talking about that. Are you prepared to go outside when it's making twenty? Should we have indoor recess? There's observation examples from there. Little notebooks in there with their thermometer. And first grade is talking about Dr. Martin Luther King and kindness. The second grade is finishing up their unit on fossils and creating narratives about what would be like to be a paleontologist. Where would you go? What would you find? What tools would you use? Third grade, if anybody saw the all-school meeting or got on Parent Square, they worked on their four-foot-tails. Fourth grade is doing their, in conjunction with the Hitchcock Center, they're doing a unit on weather erosion. And they have a climate action project going on about recycling. Fifth grade is finishing up their unit on decimals. And in art, they're learning about storytellers. So that's interesting. Make sure they're visiting if you guys want to have them enter the storytellers. Catherine has it in there. So we're busy. We're back at it. Sounds like it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Public comment? All righty. Next up and unfinished business is the budget, FY twenty-six budget.
She's like, let me.
I thought it was a special thing for me.
She was going to prove it for us.
Okay. So I think that this first draft of Deerfield's budget is presenting in a really positive position. As you can see on this sheet, Level Services is coming in at three-point-four-five percent increase. We're fortunate that we did not have to rely on ESSR funds or Rural Aid in Deerfield to offset last year's budget. Some of our other districts have, and they're starting off in deficit because of that. ESSR was used last year to pay sick buyback for Deerfield, so that did not have a direct budget impact. And then Rural Aid, we had earmarked to cover the cost of the flex bus, which was about seventy-five thousand dollars, but we ended up eliminating the flex bus. So we didn't need to use that towards the budget either. So we're in a really good position. So considering that, things in Level Services include COLA increases. There's placeholders in for school-based staff for teachers and IAs who are currently in negotiations and central office staff. So that figure is taken into account. One thing to note is that there is no sick buyback retirement payout for Deerfield in FY twenty-six. We do have a placeholder in the budget. It is an expense line that we have every year because typically Deerfield does have at least one retiree, given you're the largest school with the most teachers. So that'll, that'll just be in the budget. And I actually think it's a good thing because I'm going to talk a little bit about revolving funds that could have some impact on the budget as we go through this conversation tonight. I wouldn't recommend taking it out because next year we could need it. And, you know, we don't want to have to be searching for those funds. Other expense increases, these are based on actuals. So one percent is about fifty-three thousand. So the other expense increases to date total thirty-seven thousand in adjustments. That's based on the prior three years or things that have changed, that we know have changed. Like the copier lease has gone up. Do you have new copiers here? Didn't, did we just do that this past year? So there was an increase in the cost for that. Summer school and nature's classroom stipends, we've been slightly over budget for several years on those lines because of the number of staff that we've needed for those different positions. So I'm recommending we increase that. Transportation has been slightly increased because of the COLA per the contract. There's a two-and-a-half percent inflation every year. Our water consumption is up over the last several years, whether it's rate increases or actually using more water. I'd have to go back and pull the bills, but what I can tell you is that we've been overdrawn on that account. So I'm recommending an adjustment there. Building and liability insurance, that comes through the town. They ask us to essentially pay our portion of their liability and business insurance just for the school. That has not been adequate enough in the last several years, so I'm looking for an adjustment there. And then central office insurance benefits based on our actuals. That's just Deerfield's portion of the central office expenses. There haven't been adequate funds in the budget for some time. And then we have contractual agreements for various software, whether it's curriculum-based or it could even be Parent Square or Power School. Those rates are continuing to increase year to year. And Scott Paul also asked, our IT director, asked for some additional funding to replace Chromebooks if needed because, believe it or not, we bought them all in COVID, but it's time to start cycling things out. We do have line items for that kind of thing, but the costs have gone up. We're also looking at replacing teacher laptops and possibly giving IAs laptops that don't have them already. So he's asking for some additional funding there as well. So that's the Level Services. That's at three-point-four-five percent. So I think it's not a bad spot for us to be in. Just as a reminder, last year, our budget was approved at four-point-six-five percent, which was a last-minute increase, if you remember, because of the transportation contract. These initial conversations that we had last year, we were around three-ish percent, if not slightly less. And then transportation blew us all up district-wide. So otherwise, we've been around three for the prior three years. So I think that this is a good spot for us to be in. The next thing that we look at is principal office requests. So Tina consults with stakeholders in the building, sees the different things that we might need. Fortunately, we don't need any new staffing as far as we can tell going into the new year. So the principal office request is very minimal, point-two-one percent or eleven thousand dollars. And it's for two purposes, grounds maintenance. So one, we have the new rain gardens that went in with the construction in front of the building. And then we also have on the side of the building where the bridge is over there, that rain garden. No one has really been maintaining those. And in the front, we haven't had the amount of landscaping that we currently have. So we need to make sure that we can pay for contracted services for that because our custodians can't fulfill that need. And then also playground upkeep. I know that we're talking about playground renovations, but the playground on the other side of the building will still need to have some upkeep, whether that's woodchips or, you know, minor maintenance and things like that. And then the other increase is three thousand dollars for music, replacing instruments, repairing instruments, updating inventory, things along those lines. So very minimal request. Adding those two pieces together, we're at three-point-six-six percent. And that's before we talk about applying Rural Aid. So this year's Rural Aid allocation for Deerfield is a hundred-and-ten-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars. We did not have the Rural Aid numbers when the budget was first being built. They didn't release them until, what, late November? I think it was right before Thanksgiving, maybe. And we also don't ever know at this point, based on the way that they appropriate these funds at the state level, how much it's going to be and if we're definitely going to get it. So rather than adding it in off the get-go, we basically say, okay, if we didn't have this money, what would our budget look like? But now that we know what that allocation is, assuming there's no changes at the state level to reduce those funds, which there always could be because they would be part of nine-C cuts if the state's revenue was down, that would be one of the first things that they would look at reducing. If we applied that full a hundred-and-ten-thousand, which we are not necessarily recommending, but I just wanted to tell you what that would look like, it would be a reduction of two-point-oh-seven percent from the budget. So we'd be about one-point-seven-five, maybe, if we did use that full hundred-and-ten-thousand. A little bit more information here for you, just as a FYI, our school choice balance remains very healthy. I'll continue to monitor it. You know, we'll look at outgoing sixth graders, what spaces we have available, see what applications Tina has and what she thinks she can fill for spots. But we know the conversation has been that we continue to have decreased opportunity for enrollment in school choice because of some of the decisions that we've made with reducing classroom section. So it's just something to keep an eye on. And then the last piece that I want to talk about is Deerfield's special education programs that can bring in outside tuition with students coming in from other districts. So last year, we started the DEN program. We do have a student or did have a student who was coming in from out of district this year, even though we didn't anticipate that being the case. It was perfect opportunity. We brought in some revenue. My understanding is that student is no longer with us or is transitioning out of the program. So we won't have revenue coming into that fund next year. And one of, I mentioned that not having that sick buyback might help us in this case because we are currently paying an existing IA from that fund. The IA will need to be, continue to be in the program, so it's not an elimination of that position. It just might mean a shifting of the funding source since we don't have revenue coming in as of right now, that we know. So we'll basically swap the placeholder of the sick buyback, which is actually slightly higher than an IA salary is. And then the other program, LEAP enrollment. So we have, we are anticipating one enrollment from outside of the district, so we will have some revenue coming in there. Same concept, this year, we're paying an IA out of that fund as it is. We'll continue to do that as long as the student is enrolled. So it just, it helps alleviate some of the stress on our regular budget when we have the opportunity to bring in students from outside, as well as serving around students in those programs as well. So a lot of information in a really small amount of time. If you need me to repeat anything or have questions, I'm happy to answer them for you. Otherwise, we'll continue through the process. You know, we'll chat again before the next meeting, likely make some recommendations to you to consider about Rural Aid, see where we, we spend that. Do we spend some on playground? Do we have other capital projects that maybe we don't announce to town? You know, that kind of thing. Definitely apply some portion of that to the budget to get us under the three percent. I think the town would be more than happy to have that happen based on what we've heard from Trevor, who sits on the negotiations committee for both Frontier and Union Thirty-Eight. So we'll hopefully have a little bit smaller of a number for you to consider next time. And we won't vote on anything until March, so.
Karen Paul from last year, and you said last year we allocated, was it seventy-seven thousand of Rural Aid?
It was about seventy-five, somewhere around there.
Okay.
But I don't anticipate we're having that flex bus coming back, right?
I just want to say thank you for all your hard work in making sure we didn't have a lot of ESSR things on the budget. That makes our job a lot easier, not have to deal with that.
I mean, I think you guys did the hard work too, making those decisions to consolidate classrooms and having open and honest conversations about what that looks like for the community and the staff and the students and our families. So, yeah, I think it was a group effort.
The Rural Aid, excuse me, that, so that is unrestricted use?
Yes.
Okay.
The state prefers that you use it for items that might lead you towards regionalization, but there's really no stipulations.
But it changes every year.
So we fill out a form every year to talk about how we could use the money toward regionalization. Because they require us to say, how could you use this money toward regionalization? Something like that in the question. It's part of the state. The legislators said that would be part of the mandate. You'll give you the money, you can use for anything you want, but you got to talk about how you could regionalize.
Do you say the same thing every year?
You fill it out.
I filled it out, yeah. Yes, exactly. I mean, we talk about regionalization all the time. Every committee discusses it. If it's not every month, it's every couple of months about how smoother our district could run if we were regionalized. So it's not necessarily a lie. We're just not spending the money to use it.
Right. And Shelley said it, but I want to make sure it kind of sank in for those of you who haven't talked about the Rural Aid before, is that the money, right now, we're spending this year's monies next year, right? So the money, we're spending a year in the rear, as we used to say. And we used to say that about school choice when it first started up. If you go way back then, most of the schools has never spent in the year. You're getting it because you don't know, in the year you're getting it because you don't know if you're actually going to get it. Remember, I was talking about, I think in November or something, where we was kind of concerned that there are going to be nine-C cuts and they would be able to cut Rural Aid. So you got to be careful, you know, if you, we should be applying some of it to our budget because I think it is the state's attempt to offset the Chapter Seventy monies that are mostly going toward urban areas and not rural areas. And so this is kind of a, their way of kind of offsetting that. But if you, we do have neighboring districts that are spending next year's projected income. If you don't get it, then you got to cut during the school year. And so you never want to really put people in that position because if you're going to cut during the school year, most likely you're cutting positions. And so, so anyway, so I'm just kind of saying that, so we're in a good position there if we start about using that money for next year. We, I said this last night, we were at Conway. You're really not spending the money. That dollar, actual dollar bill is not actually going. You're going to put that into school choice and then use school choice the following year. You're moving the money around because you have to use the money by the end of this fiscal year. So if you, so if you start looking like, wait a minute, we're using money this fiscal year. We're applying to next year's budget. We're just kind of, we'll be shifting accounts. So we use the, we'll save money in school choice and then use that school choice money next year. Does that follow, Mary?
So if you look at this year's school choice report, you'll actually see transportation is in at seventy-five thousand dollars and it's not been spent. So last year, I took seventy-five thousand dollars of school choice expenses and put it on rural aid because we had to spend the Rural Aid last year. So we saved seventy-five thousand in school choice and earmarked it for this year. So it's sort of a tricky balance that we're playing with finances. But it's the only way to apply it towards your budget. If they're not going to tell us in advance how much we're getting, if it's not part of the cherry sheet, which I don't necessarily think it should become, but that's a whole different topic. You know, if we don't find out till November of the following year, it's impossible to really apply it to your budget appropriately.
So one of the things, I've been talking to our state legislators when I, when I meet with them, and I'll meet with them, the superintendents have a sit-down around the table with them for all Western Mass in March. But the one thing I say is, if you can't guarantee Rural Aid, guarantee fifty percent the following year. So we automatically know if we spend fifty percent spending forward. Hopefully, we can stay in the position of always spending a year in the rear, that means we're very healthy. But if we have to project ahead, then we know you at least have to give us fifty percent on the prior year. So if you're going to make cuts in that area, you can only cut everything fifty percent. And so that way, we can start using it. And, and if they stop getting that money, we can have two years to prepare, cutting in a half one year and then the next year, if that's the case. And there's also these formulas and whatnot. So, I mean, they gave us the money this year and then three weeks later, we got an email saying, sorry, we made a miscalculation. We have now taken back, we took like eight thousand, like eight thousand from Deerfield lost.
Because they left out two school districts from the calculation. So they had to recalculate it.
Everyone lost?
Everyone lost money.
So, but talk about that kind of flexibility. You got, we got the award. So if we were going to buy a school van with that money, right? And we went out and we purchased it, then all of a sudden, three weeks later, I mean, I'm trying to find something that takes something quickly to buy, but you wouldn't go buy a car that fast. But let's say you could, then all of a sudden, you'd be like, wait a minute, you just spent the money. And then they, they just adjusted it within a month. So it's kind of like, you just got to be careful with that money. You know, similar to, as we talk about regional transportation with Frontier, they're in the same kind of boat. That money is, it can come and go, it can go up and down. And, you know, we, we project a little bit lower than average to protect ourselves in that area.
They're also a little bit sneaky, I think, with how they pay it out. They don't pay it like Chapter Seventy, where you get a certain amount every month. For school choice, you get a certain amount every month. They make two payments. They make an early payment and they make a payment at the end of the year. So if they do have to make adjustments, they still have time to make adjustments. So it's not the most secure funding source for us.
I don't rely on that.
Exactly.
If I could just ask one more question on the same topic. Historically, how have we used, like at last, at this time last year, how were those funds directed?
We spent some of last year's money, I think, on the mini-split and capital projects possibly. And then we earmarked the rest of it. In prior years, the amount had been much smaller, like maybe thirty or forty thousand that we just decided to use internally. Last year was the first year that the state made a commitment to grow Rural Aid. So everyone saw a really significant increase.
Yeah. We can get exactly what we spent and I make earmarks up there. But we didn't offset the budget with it.
We have not.
Yeah, no, and I, I just, I'm just curious as we, because it is a sizable amount. And so if we can be strategic and not, and use it in a way like you're saying, where we're not relying on it and then we get the carpet pulled out from underneath us, we want to maintain that, so.
I mean, if we had to make a decision today, I would say we throw fifty percent toward the budget, get that number down below three percent, and then use the other fifty percent for the playground.
Which would be a safe call because we probably received fifty percent as our first payment and then they'll send the rest in though.
Because we were going to commit school choice money to that anyways, so we'll just be not cutting into school choice as much. And then that'll prepare us for next year's capital request of the second after the playground. You know what I mean? As we look forward, you know, to doing that whole thing done. So that's how, if you said right now, snapshot, let's, we'll talk about things and move things around. And, but, you know, very simple planning, that would be the way I would handle it.
Feels like a good start. Thank you for telling me, and Tina, and Darius, and everyone else who does all the thinking on this. Any other questions? All right. Look forward to discussing again in February. Next up, playground update, capital CP committee request.
Did you update there? So, you know, we submitted all our stuff to CP, to CPA, which is called the CPC, and when they meet, committee. And they were supposed to have a meeting, or they had the meeting last week to discuss, they were supposed to make a decision. But apparently, the REC committee got, they wanted the REC committee to offer an opinion because it's considered recreation and involves from their category. And the REC committee didn't take any action on it. So they would like to wait until the REC committee takes action on it. And so now they postponed the vote until February fifteenth. So I feel like it's leaning favorably for them to cover the two-hundred thousand dollars. And then we cover the rest. One of the things, provision of them providing money is that we have to spend our money first toward the project and then their two-hundred thousand dollars second. Which I didn't really understand why they get the refund and not the school system, but they're, not everybody's the school. We kind of argued a little bit about that. Not argued, but discussed. I didn't understand why the school system wouldn't save the money, you know, why would it go back into the saving account of CPA then? But it's, it's the way they do things and we're learning along the way there. So, anyway, so we're still in the process of getting that money. I, it looks pretty good. I think it was, it was positive. It's been a lot of long meetings as they're trying to get their kind of things together on their end. And the REC committee doesn't meet regularly. This is not something they usually do, as I talked to one of their members, because like, what happened? They're like, well, we got this information. We didn't know what we're supposed to do because we don't usually do this. And so they should be ready to go next time and it wouldn't be a problem. They asked questions that were straightforward. You know, had I known I needed to be on there, it would have probably gone through pretty quickly because they're asking questions like, how many, why aren't there more quotes? And I'm like, it's not a quote. This is a estimate set by the architect. You have to put this out to bids over a hundred thousand dollars. But it's not a committee that deals with that. So they're asking for an opinion if a committee doesn't normally deal with that kind of thing. So, anyway, so that's where we're at. So it's probably one more meeting away before that will be approved to go before the town. And the town's going to have to choose to use the money that way. So, yeah.
Did you update? Thank you for attending those long meetings.
Yeah, fun.
Okay. Desi District review.
So Desi, I sent, I put an FAQ in your packet because if you just read through it, it'll kind of spell it out without me going into long things about it. But Desi picks about twelve to fifteen districts in the state to do a review or an audit, much like those you've been around, NEAS did years ago. It's kind of similar to where they look at every aspect, every aspect of our, of our district. You know, we have all five of our districts as one. And so they are going to be meeting, visiting us the first week of March to visit classrooms and to meet with members of our community, including you. And so there will be a sign-up. I said, you know, our district is obviously unique. They normally meet with the entire school committee, but I said, there's twenty-four of them. How do you want to do that? And they said, they'll kind of get back to me. So it's not really Desi. Desi doesn't do this anymore. Now you now have a third-party contractor, which is also kind of interesting because I had to meet with a third-party contractor that does the building authority, is doing an assessment of all our schools across the state, and they use a third-party contractor. So there's kind of like this separation of, I don't know where they're getting all this money to buy all these car contractors to do their work for them, but that's kind of a, I can kind of see how they, they get to step away from it. The, I think, you know, I looked at a report, Pioneer was done last year. There's not a big splash impact on Pioneer. I read through their report. You can change the title on it, put it in our district. I mean, a lot of the things are, they're looking for, you know, the textbook of what how schools run and there'll be areas that, in my opinion, it's going to be some of our, if we hired a consultant, we know what our watch says, to tell us what our watch says. You know what I mean? But it'll be interesting, so. But it is a lot of work, a lot of collecting. You know, I mean, just for instance, you know, Shelley had to put together the last three years of budgets for all schools, the last three years of prepared budgets, what was presented at budget hearing, what was the approved budget for all five schools for the last three years. So I'm like, you want fifteen budgets? She's like, yes, we do. I'm like, okay. You know, and so the good news is a lot of our other stuff is in good order. You know, we have a, you know, we'll give them the old strategic plan toward one, but we have an equity plan. We have a professional development plan. We have a curriculum plan. So all those are getting uploaded as well as our curriculums and all the other kind of things. So it's a lot going on, but, so, yeah, we're kind of whacking away at that. And so again, there'll be, as it gets closer to March, I'll be sending out, if you want to, they'll explain how they want to do it, either virtually or in person, and also in the evening on two days. I think it's going to be the beginning of that week, but we'll see if you guys want to. I'm sure we're going to need a certain percentage, so I'll put that out there and communicate that. And they also meet with the rest of the community, other community members who want to, teachers and so forth. But, yeah.
All right. Thank you. There's no other questions on that. We talked about the four thousand dollar donation from Yankee Candle, that we need to take a vote to formally accept it. Is there anything else Tina or Darius want to say before we take a vote on that?
Thank you.
All righty. So I would be looking for a motion to vote to accept the donation of Yankee Candle. All righty, so I would be looking for a motion to vote to accept the donation of Yuki Candle. Second. There's no further conversation, all in favor? Five in favor? Thank you. All right, reports. The chair does not have a report. Collaborative, so you sent out.
I did, I sent a financial status report that was new as of yesterday. We did not meet in December and the last meeting was largely about budget due to ending SIR funds. The collaborative had just cut almost $2 million for this year. They are trying very hard to not have it affect direct services, but they just want members to know that their financial position is challenging as of now. The email that I forwarded details where they're going to be cutting the money this year.
I'm sorry to hear that. Thank you. Superhead's report.
Most of its updates are, you know, are talking about, just to keep people mindful. Just also the mark the date, January 22nd, governor's budget will come out. You know, that will affect us as we will, we'll know what Frontier's assessment is to the towns and we'll also have an idea, the towns will get an idea where they stand as they will get what they are getting for revenues from the state. Because that will affect what they can afford here. Additionally, which is not on the report, I could add it by now, but I want to talk about the data breach that happened. They sent a memo out last week about. So our student manager, student information system is Power School. And somebody, what do they call them, what do they call it? An actor, is they call this, is what they call it, got into their, it's hacker, but they call it an actor, got into the, into their system on their end, not our end. And so it's a nationwide company and extracted information out, which is kind of the new hacking world where they don't, before they used to plant bugs and do whatever viruses and to either slowly take money or to manipulate money or to lock down systems and hold you hostage and that kind of stuff. So another way they're trying to get, getting money out there is they take information out and they say, look what I have, do you want it back? And so that's what happened in this regards where a company, they're actually a, like a titled company, went in, I mean, I'm not sure if they're incorporated, but they're, they have a title for themselves, went in, pulled it out, said, would you like this back? And then Power School negotiated through a third-party consultant to pay for them, to show them deleting that information. So the way the hacking world works is there has to be some level of honesty where nobody will pay the hackers. So we are under good faith that they deleted the information they stole. The information that they did steal from us that we can tell is classroom information and student information on classroom pages. So names, addresses, birthdates were taken. We don't host social security numbers or any financial information on the Power School. So you can't, they won't have the information to open a credit card or want a credit, that kind of thing. Other schools did, and so if you read in the news and stuff, other schools did have social security numbers taken. And so there's another level of concern there because it's considered a different level of identity threat if that kind of information's taken. So right now, we're doing kind of a wait and see because Power School is under an obligation to, they're doing a forensic audit, but they're doing, remember they, they store over thousands of schools and so they have to go through each school to what they believe was taken, and then they have to give us a report because they federally have to let us know that. And then they have to tell us how they're going to compensate those who have lost information. And so meanwhile, we're watching to see if that information has gotten out there. It's not obviously just we, but we as all the customers of Power School. And now the, the government's gotten involved because of the major impact it's had on citizens and so forth. So there's a lot of other people kind of watching this. So I kind of tried to say that in my letter, like, I don't, they said it's been deleted, they presented the evidence, they actually videotaped them deleting it, but there's a backup, that kind of stuff. Like, it's kind of, it sounds like you, you laugh out of the, kind of the horror of it all. But, you know, I don't trust until, we're going to keep an eye out and make sure that. And then we'll also find out if part of that, you know, sometimes they will give subscriptions to watch your credit and that kind of stuff. So we're hoping that will be part of the, I guess, compensation of. We've also notified our insurance companies and they are now involved as well because we have to let them know there's a possible liability, there's possible claims coming forward. Because if something was to come after us, we're going to go to insurance. But right now, there are no damages that I know of, nobody can point that I've lost my data and this is what's happened to it, that kind of thing. So we're in, we're in an okay spot, but it is kind of, again, the positive side is, didn't, we didn't do it, our vendor did it. But, you know, we put, we select vendors, we put faith into a vendor and that kind of thing, so we're still responsible to some level. But not directly, you know, like, and so, so that's kind of the summary there. I can handle general questions on it, anything specific though I can get from Scott Paul, who's been on it from the beginning.
Sounds like a headache.
Yeah.
Also the reality of the world that we live in, unfortunately on all different levels.
It could happen to any company, any organization.
And a good reminder when we're selecting vendors, right? That's a good reminder of what can't happen. If, if we're giving, if we're giving data over, you know, are there, do we need policies? Should we be looking at some practices that might protect us down the road? Even from just a paperwork standpoint, being able to say, we put these in place. So something to consider.
Yeah, keep an eye out for what, how people are adjusting to that. It's also one of those where it's, now they've been hacked, they're going to double down on all their protections there. Like, we have, there's clauses, you know, our legal team, you know, is obviously represents multiple districts. And so some districts are talking about cutting them immediately as their vendor and then other districts are not. And so we're going to kind of wait and see, we're still kind of in the early phases because they're doing a, because they did a breach terms of contract, so we could get out of the contract. You know, we do spend about $25,000 a year on them as a vendor. But we also need to be able to, we need that, we need a information system that's reliable. And not, the amount of state reporting that we do out of that system is unbelievable what they've asked for in the last 10 years, increase every year. So there's only a few options out there and we've been happy with what it provides as far as data keeping, just obviously not happy that they've been hacked.
Just for the notes, it's Power School or Parent Square?
Power School.
Power School, okay.
Parent Square is our communication system.
Seem like important.
And it, well, it absolutely is, everybody's like, delete the app. We have two apps, you should have both apps on your phone, right?
We currently have any vendors, excuse me, housing any other sensitive information that might be worthwhile are just kind of being, being aware of, or is it predominantly in the Power School?
Well, we have a financial system that's hosted on the web as well, right? It's cloud-hosted, so that would be the, that holds everything.
The other big ones.
That would be the big one in the sense of identity information, because that's how we do our payroll and taxes and so on.
Which would primarily affect Frontier because we don't necessarily.
Because the tenants do.
We'll house all of the employee information for the elementary schools because the tenants pay the elementary school employees. It would have name and address. I bet you we do have to fill in date of birth as a required field. I'm not sure about social security number, but Frontier definitely would be anything and everything for the employee.
And then we use Google Platform for everything else. And, and interesting that, you know, we talk about AI and using AI and that kind of stuff and, and, you know, what information is being stored there. You know, every letter I write in Google Docs, you know, to hear about your child is confidential. Like someone was to hack my Google Docs file and get that information. Well, it's not, you're not going to open a credit card, it's private information to you and your family, you know. So there is, there's worries on every single thing we deal, when we deal with either student records or personal records, so. Yeah, so those are probably the biggest ones.
Are there health forms or is that all through Desi?
No, health forms go, actually, that's good, that's another database that we use. And they're all interlinked too, you know, so like you can't open up a student's health records from Power School. The Power School, no, I guess they're, they're linked in since we upload data. So what we upload data so we know, you know, teachers know who in their classroom has an allergy, right? They may not have the full medical history on that, they may, they don't have the full medical history on that, but they do know. We make the links that way. So, yeah, there's a, we have a nursing.
Do you use Navia? Do you use Navia?
No. It doesn't ring a bell. I'm trying to think, it's going to come.
It's all in the now by Power School anyway.
Yeah.
All right, anything else? We have an executive session on the agenda, we're ready to go into that. We're going to enter executive session, judge, discuss strategy for collective bargaining with teachers and IAs and also to discuss negotiations with our Director of Business Administration, Shelley. But they're not going to be taking any votes, so when you come out of executive session, it'll be just to adjourn.
You do have to roll call in.
Yeah, a roll call into executive session.
Yes, we don't.
We're going to go to executive session. All in favor of a move to executive session? Oh, roll call, oh, Amy, yeah.
Oh, did you say Amy?
I said Amy.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'll call your name when you say yes.
Yes.
Well, Mary, Carrie, yes? Annie?
Yes.